All right, good evening, everybody. If we could all please rise a table for the collective allegiance.
We're allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America's stand for a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I didn't wait for you, sorry. That's getting through, sorry about that. All right, well, evening, everybody. Thanks for coming in on a Wednesday night from the meteorologist's forecast on Monday night. People was home, sunny and sunny on Monday night, so, but thank you. All right, so at this time, we will open up the first hearing and privilege of the board. If anyone would like to address the board, please just state your name, your address, and adhere to the five-minute board policy. All right, so we will close the hearing privilege floor. Remind everybody that we will have a second one at the end of the meeting. And now, we will move on to our budget discussion. Superintendent Schwartz.
All right, so it's my typical strategy. I can't work this thing. That's my typical strategy. So tonight, what I hope to accomplish with you, I want to answer any questions you have about our March 6 budget presentation. I want to provide some additional clarifying information. I want to review your list of negotiables and non-negotiables, and I want to take a look at enrollment trends. Just take a moment to center ourselves in our work tonight. So the first thing is, I'll be right there. Mr. Giaquinto pointed out to me after last week's meeting that I had put zeros in under health insurance, family, the EPO, and under dental, and reminded me that, of course, those items are not actually zero cost. So those are the corrected item, the corrected salaries for pro forma teacher sub-aid and teaching assistance step one. So the last, this would replace last week's information. And then you take a look at the fringe benefit cost that's in there, what percentage it is as total cost, and then as a percent of salary, and that 113% is not incorrect. If you go back and take a look, teaching assistance step one is $25,286. With benefits, it's $53,898, the cost of that position. So sometimes people are working in those TA positions for the benefits. Makes sense. These were your negotiables and non-negotiables last week. Certainly, we can continue to talk about these things. As Hal said to me, we didn't give you much to work with. No, you did not, but that's okay.
Emily, would you like to talk about your, oh, did you go back one second?
Of course.
Yes, I think there was a misunderstanding. I wasn't, I picked the arts arbitrarily. What I had been thinking in my head for a long time was the concept of magnet schools. I didn't want to come here and say the words magnet schools at a meeting, and I was just thinking about people saying we should bring robotics and STEM offerings to schools, and then I was hearing what you said about if we want to continue doing all the things that we're currently doing, it's going to cost this much more money. And so in my head, I was thinking, what if we had, what if we pushed some, if we concentrated the offerings more at the different schools, we then would have to come up with a transportation plan. If we said we're going to have 10 STEM electives at Glendal and not at other schools, we would have to then give parents a way to get their students to those schools, and I thought it would open up all of these. I went to the art example because that's, art and music is my field, and it's just what I, I wasn't saying there's something wrong with the way we currently have our arts classes at the school. And I, it's, I got some feedback after the fact that it sounded like that's what I was saying, that's, that's, I'm not saying let's right-size art and music offerings, I'm saying what would happen if we concentrated, made Sac and Daga a STEM school, and made one school an arts magnet, and made one, and, and just, that's a longer conversation for another time, and that's all I was saying.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
So this might seem confusing then, because I did pull together some data about orchestra. I think this came up last week. Somewhat useful anyway. You can take a look at participation rates in fourth grade here. Those are our total enrollments on the left in that second column. So we have 170 fourth graders in the district, and about 42% of them participate in the elementary instrumental program at fourth grade. And then we have our fifth grade. Participation is a little bit lower there, but again, healthy. We also had a question about our vehicle inventory, so we want to take a look at this. I'll give you a second to take a look at that. That's the rest of our inventory. Drew, would you like to add anything about the inventory?
As you know, the board grew some snowplow replacements last couple years, but you can see the majority of our fleet is over 10 years old. We do send them out for bodywork and all kinds of maintenance work to try to maintain them, but it's an older fleet, and the emphasis is on getting the plow trucks replaced because they're really, yesterday's important, so I hope that addresses where you had a great question about that. They're pretty old. We push them.
Are these, are any of these slated for replacement?
The cargo van is, I think that was on the first slide.
Yeah, on the first line, yeah.
That's the one that's really in that.
Yeah, okay.
Are these ages about their life expectancy, or are these way past that?
They're not like buses, so they really is, we just ride them until they're running out from the bottom, or, you know, put your hands through them, real well. No, we ride them pretty hard, pretty long.
But essentially, it's only one out of 12, you know, that we have you, that's not, that's not bad. It's not a large replacement.
They're not electric either, they're all.
Any other questions about that before I move on? I also want to provide you with a breakdown about teaching assistants and where they're currently located, and how many there are in the gen ed program, and then how many are special education teaching assistants. Not surprisingly, more special education teaching assistants than general education teaching assistants, but that 56 that I presented to you last week, this is the breakdown in where they are. Just a little reminder from last week about where we are in terms of budget. If we were to roll this year's budget forward and maintain everything we are presently doing, where that gets us to. Now, I'm going to ask Drew to join me and talk a little bit about our 10-year tax information, our historical perspective on this, which is also over two sides, so.
This is a 10-year look at what the maximum level tax cap was compared to what we went out with, compared to the tax rate and our spending rate. And you've heard me over the last few years, always talk 2-2. Historically, a 2% spending and about a 2% levy increase. When Susan rolls the next slide, you'll see that the average has been about 2% tax levy and 2% spending, so pretty close to what we always talk about. Only one year do we ever exceed the maximum allowable cap, and the public supported that. So in this 10 years, we've always gone at or under the tax cap except for one year. And the current proposed draft, the first draft, shows that we're almost going up, you know, 2% more than historically. So that's, that's what I wanted to display.
And then we wanted to take a look at some projections. These are based on five years of categorical budget and state aid increases, but to give you an idea of what happens as we roll forward.
So I looked at the historical trend the past five years, and then brought into play the first draft. If we took those percent increases historically, categorically, and rolled it out the next four years, you would see that we're going to have tax levy increases about 3.18%, that range, over the 2.51 spending increase. Historically, the state aid has gone up 2% in the last 10 years. So I think we're going to return close to that norm, and that would yield a 3.18% tax increase. You'll see it change a little bit because I combined the tax levies and the pilots for this presentation, so, because they are really taxes, that's why it's a little, not a straight 3.18. That's the impact if we went out with the fourth.
Any questions for Drew before we move on?
So the state aid increase, that's foundation aid?
Overall state aid.
Overall.
Yep.
Other questions? And now, I'd like to take a look at our 10-year enrollment trends. So if you were to look at 2013, 14 to where we are now, you can definitely see that we are experiencing a decline in enrollment. And although in '22, '23, this school year, in theory, we have 2,212 children, we actually have 2,205 here. We have homeschooled students, we have out-of-district students, and then we have students that we are transporting to parochial and private schools. If all of those kids came back to us, it would certainly help us enrollment-wise. But I would tell you honestly, I don't see that happening. Those numbers have been fairly stable. Homeschool increased after COVID, but you can take a look and see the trend isn't great for us. And then I did the same thing that Drew had done, working with Mr. Zlottner, and we have rolled forward for five years from this year's 2012. Now, when we met with Steve, he shared with us that the county birth rate data, the live birth rate data for 2021 and 2021, '22 are not available yet. He thinks it's being held up because of COVID and people not being there at the state to work with the data. So if he gets new updated data, we will get that and put, update these numbers. But based on our trends and using cohort survival number, I'm sorry, formula, this is where we appear to be trending. I think it's important to think about that when you think about budget over the next five years and the increases we will potentially face. And again, when we're looking at a declining enrollment. And this is where we presently are, '22, '23, in terms of elementary sections. So you probably remember, there was a time when Sac and Daga always had three sections of everything. That's not true now. You might recall when we took that second grade section to two sections. I've included on here our class size guidelines, and I would remind you, they're guidelines, not caps. And we have always said plus or minus one or two, as opposed to moving students to a different school. So if you take a look, that's where we're sitting right now. This is what we're projecting as of March 1st for incoming kindergartners. So you can see, I've divided them to sections per school, but there's a total of 132 as of March 1st that we are aware of. Of those 132, we have at least somewhere between five and seven incoming kindergarten students who are currently under consideration for out-of-district placements. So if those kids don't come here and go out of district, we're talking 126. Even at sections of 20, it would be a reduction of two more sections from where we are now. Technically, you could go to. I'm not suggesting we're going to do that. Last year, you might recall, when I was talking to you, I was talking about the fact we were somewhere around 140, and I was sure it was going to come up pretty dramatically after that, and it did not. Enrollment was about 140 for kindergarten this year. So I am a little worried about this number, and if it's going to hold. And in speaking with Karen just yesterday, she told me we don't generally pick up 20, 30 kids over the summer, more like five, six. So this number is alarming to me in the sense that this really might, in the coming year, force us to take a look at, I never thought I would say this, grade-level centers. Because I am not convinced we are going to be able to maintain two healthy sections at Glendal, Glenmore, and Lincoln, and SAC as those sections roll through. Now, again, when we get more county birth data, perhaps that will change, but right now, that number is the lowest I have seen it. Now, I wanted to go back. If you're wondering, why would you look at 2005, '06 compared to this year? It's because I came in 2005, '06, so this was the first year I was superintendent here. So if you take a look at this, when I came in 2005, '06, our total enrollment was 2,900 students. We are now at 2,200 students. So the change is much more dramatic than when you look at it through a cohort survival study where you see it kind of gradually dropping. This is really the impact we're feeling. The average class size in 2005, '06 for common branch, that would be K6, certified folks, was 20 students per class. Right now, we're at about 17.8 students per class. Our percentage of students with disabilities has stayed pretty consistent, but if you take a look at our students we identify as economically disadvantaged based on free and reduced lunch, you can see that number has almost tripled. So what does that all mean? When you say to me, as you did last week, with all good intentions in your heart, we need to add more, add more, add more, I want us to be cognizant of the fact that if you add more, add more, add more, our numbers are dropping. So I'm not convinced that what we need to do is add more, but it may very well be time to look at the way we're doing business and what that really means. I'm not suggesting we close a school. But I think we are getting very close to the point where we are going to have to say what makes sense for us as a district. I don't see our population increasing dramatically. Maybe I'm wrong, but I don't think so. And the reason I don't think that is because across New York State, schools are losing students. Rural schools are having challenges with enrollment. Urban schools are often over-enrolled, but students are not consistently there. The suburban schools, with the exception of Shen, which stays pretty stable, and North Colony, which has even had a decline in enrollment, are the only places that are really seeing growth. So I want us to be cautious as we continue our budget discussions about adding more. I think we, I'm going to say what, to you, what I always say to people sitting behind me, my team. You want something else, you got to tell me how we're going to pay for it, because this isn't the kind of thing where we can just keep adding on. And when you think about what we've added, which I shared with you last week when we looked at all of the staffing counts, as we've watched our enrollment decline, I want you to be cognizant, you have been adding. You have been good stewards of the district. You have made a very good attempt to make sure we're meeting people's needs. And although those needs may be different than they were in 2005, 2006, don't underestimate the work you have already done to try to meet people's needs. I've been in education a long time. We always want more. I always want more. You know, I want preschool desperately. I always want more. But again, as a person who in part is here to be a good steward of the district's resources, I want us to be thinking about this as we continue our budget discussions. Fair enough? And all of this will be posted as of tomorrow. You folks have your copies, and we would be happy to take questions.
Drew, can I just make comments on the enrollment? When I started on the board in the late 1990s, we were about 34, 3,500 kids, which means we've lost a third of the population that I started it, when I was starting the board. That's pretty scary.
The only question that I had, and that we can remind ourselves, and I know it's a question that, you know, Mr. Sanger asked a few weeks ago in the opening current hearing, is that the current third grade enrollment, it's the only single class, or is that consistent since the beginning of the year?
No, we condensed those classes coming from the second grade, which we wouldn't do, so those two 16s. And the numbers in parentheses are children with special needs who are assigned to another teacher but go into those classes for mainstreaming or inclusion. So 32 would never be where we'd be for a class. And if you look at that grade four guideline, it's 25. So yes, I would see that class moving to a singleton here in fourth grade, and then one of those fourth grade teachers, or someone else in the building, given the way the contract works, would bounce back and take the third.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Do you have anything, the families who are choosing to send their children to private school or to homeschool, do we have any information as to why they made those choices? Is there something about our school district that parents are in general, if not satisfied with, that feels like we really have to go elsewhere?
For our homeschool students, since I manage that load and the paperwork for them, I think for many of the parents, it's a religious choice, given the programming that they submit for their children. And I think that is the reason, is because that is important and valued in that family and not something the public schools teach.
Has there been increased enrollment at the Christian school on Sac and Daga?
At McKeel.
At McKeel. At my knowledge, no, they're, they've also lost enrollment.
Any other questions? All right, we will move on. Thank you, Susan.
Is there anything that you would like for next week that just comes to you tonight that you would, and if not, of course, you can let me know before the week is out. You could actually let me know right after Monday.
Interesting fact, like the number I'm looking at here is the cost per student, the change in that. So from last year's budget is $26,000. Change is going up about $2,000. This proposed budget for here, just kind of an interesting number to think of it that way, you know, and with the decrease in enrollment, the trend that you're showing us, and the business model we have with things increasing, you know, two-plus billion dollars a year, it's a tough, you're right, it's a very tough thing to think about. So I guess what you could bring to us next week is, you know, where, where can we save? I mean, I don't, you know, you know, taking away a Ford van, you know, it's almost inconsequential when you're thinking of like a large, a large number. So I guess that's the challenge, you know? Do you have any suggestions where you can really make, you know? Do you want to keep that high level of, you know, more of the students that we have, even though there are less per year? Let's make it, you know, a great district for folks to be in, and then hopefully become more attractive that way, our enrollment can increase. So it's tough, you're right, we do talk about the things you want to add, but it is maintaining that, you know, that, that target spirit that's here, you know, the high level of the echelon of education and academics that we have, so, you know, and you've been dealing with it, you know, in your career, so you know, you know more than I do, but I don't know what that secret sauce is to really.
Some days I don't know. And because we will have grant money next year, that And because we will have grant money next year, that has helped us out. Because of our bump in state aid, that has helped us out. I'm not saying we're not concerned about next year, but you know, we are under our cap right now by about 8,000, although you can see the tax implication. But when I think about, for example, taking the CRO to full-time, and we are exploring some grant options with that, that's probably another 50,000 through. And then if we were to add back a section at Glenwood, that's another 9,000. That's $140,000. You also know most of our money's tied up in SAC. So that's what I mean when I say we have to think about where it is we have to put our money, because all of these are good things. There's no choice about, I've tried, I'd rather be in a class of 15 or 16 than be in a class of 25. I think David Libbeyello is exceptional and does an incredible job, and he has done an incredible job. And 25 is not an abnormal class size in most places. We are, I don't want to say blessed, but we have been very protective of those smaller classes. I also recognize that COVID has turned things upside down, and we do have kids with disabilities. There are days I wish we could be a community school and model of Schenectady and bring all the services that kids and families need into our schools. But again, there's a cost involved in doing that. And you all know, those of you who've known me a long time, Pam, know how long I've been asking for preschool.
The whole time I've been here.
Which, even though there's preschool money, we can't afford. It's about $5,600 a child right through, times 18 kids, doesn't even get to be a teacher. So there are competing interests. And, you know, you could say to me tonight, we're just going to go with what you've got. We're going to roll the budget forward. You know that ultimately you're adopting a spending cap, and that we try to make sure there's room to move within that spending cap. We've added things after the fact. So we could certainly do that and be done with them, if you think the community would be okay with that. And we don't have to make that decision tonight. We're actually in better shape than we've been because of the influx of grant monies in the bump in state aid. But we've got to, I feel we've got to be thinking about that long view. Because I'm not even sure Rick, any words about making your schools attractive? Because everybody is seeing a decline in enrollment. And there was recently several articles about the lost children after COVID, kids who left school during COVID and just have never shown up anyplace else. We have some serious things to deal with. So I'm not trying to be doomy and gloomy, and you know that's not me, I'm the queen of optimism. But we can't just keep saying, well, we need more and more and more and more, unless we figure out how we're going to fund more and more and more with a differently limited tax base. And I would be doing my top if I can bring that up.
Wait, great question. On that van that we're looking at replacing, are we getting rid of it, or is the goal to replace that?
We're going to keep the other one in as long as it runs.
Long as you don't, I guess we needed to replace it, I would say, $81,000. Pretty quick. All right.
But Rick, I will come with some ideas next week for you folks. And again, if you have questions, other information you'd like, just let me know, and we'll try to fit it to for folks, so we have it Monday evening. The more lead time you can give me, the better.
Anything for Susan?
Go ahead, Rick.
So in addition to what Susan said, the spending cap is what the board adopts, but also a tax levy cap. It's two things now. Since 2014, that came into vogue, where it used to be a spending limit. And what I want to be cognizant of, I talked to Susan about, is if we go out with what we have, and if we have two shots at, if it goes down once, get one more shot before you go down to a contingency, you cannot raise the tax only $1. Does that be like approximately $1.3 million in reductions? Where would you get that from? That's devastating. That's the thing. We've never been this high before. And the drop is a lot further now, because we've always gone out close to the cap, which has been like 1.6 or whatever. You're going up 4% on your levy. That's a big drop to zero. That's all I want to be cognizant of. It's a big drop.
Rick, this is the first year I remember being on the board that we haven't been over with the first budget, the first meeting.
It's larger than the past.
Right, right. Years past, with the last year, it was saving a thousand, or the year before was that we had to figure out where we were going to cut and where we were going to save.
Susan, do you have any ideas as to where we might be able to cut? I'm not huge now, but I know in the past, you've always given us, you know, possible cuts to the budget. I'm personally, I'm a little weary and a little uncomfortable about going out with a 4% tax increase when we've always stayed under 3%. Kind of like that's kind of been on the magic number, is to stay under 3% increase in the taxes. And I just wondered what we were looking at, if we wanted to come down a little bit, so that we're not going out overboard.
Well, I think at this point at elementary, if we were going to try to do anything to help, we would perhaps have to take a look at inviting parents to move their children next year. And if we invite them to move their children, technically, we provide transportation. That's what we've always done. So that, and I worry about that because, you know, we don't have insurance. But that might be one thing that we could do. What might that get us? Potentially maybe a little wiggle room, but Karen and I look at those numbers pretty closely and don't see that. We're meeting at the high school on Friday, probably with the middle school, to talk about sections and sizing and what we should do. You know that in the past, Pam, I've usually been able to work around retirements. That's not working for us this year, because with the exception of one retirement, and I wouldn't say everyone in this room is in agreement about whether or not we need to replace that person, we can't pick anything up there. So staffing-wise, I'm feeling a little pinched. Drew has shored up the custodial janitorial folks using Jantronics for positions we can't fill. But I am not sure where we would go. If we go to contingency, as you know, under a contingent budget, things have to be reduced proportionately. So it would be instruction, it would be administration, it would be support staff. But I shudder to even think what that would look like. Huge. That would be disastrous. And of course, before we do that, I would encourage you to go out of the pen a second time to try to put something together that might be more palatable. And I'm not saying our community, I live here too. I'm not saying they wouldn't support 4.8. I just, whatever we choose to do, whatever you choose to do is supported. I just want you to do it mine, excuse me, mine. There's no magic.
Good luck. All right. Thank you. Moving on to our reports and updates. My favorite. Gives me more gray hair, Casper. I've been emailing back and forth with Kathy Lewis and presidents of the other boards that are around us, trying to gain more interest in it. I actually emailed Kathy yesterday. We had a correspondence back. She's been getting with New York State, bringing a proposal, and then we'll reach out to the other school boards. I'll run it by you guys if I have it. And we'll go from there. So it is moving along, but it's a little bit slower. Since Kathy is extremely busy, she keeps saying, and she's got many things going on right now, so. Rick, legislative?
So there's been a lot going on. Both houses, they've fully funded foundation aid, and every district's getting a minimum, I think it was 3%. So that was big. There's talk about revisiting the formula for foundation aid. And both houses are looking at funding meals going forward too, to see if that's going to work out. Those are kind of the big three bullet points. There's a legislative call. I think it's March 25th in the evening, Zoom call. You can share that link if anybody else wants to go. But those are the big things that I have legislatively.
Thank you. Mr. Rosar, our PTA update. Thank you for attending, by the way.
Yeah, that was cool. There's a lot, so I typed it up. I'll email it to everybody. But there are some pretty amazing events taking place and have taken place. Lots of schools raising some awesome money for the kids. There's a couple coming up. Let's see, Glenwood is doing a McDonald's fundraiser sometime soon, to be announced. Lincoln's doing a VisCos fundraiser on the 29th, so that should be pretty cool. Founder's Day is the most they've had in a hot minute. 152 people so far. So it's looking pretty awesome. And the rest, I will email you.
Beautiful. Thank you. All right.
The Medicaid audit was completed, did our response corrective action, and we'll share with you in the spring when we do the risk assessment.
Beautiful. Thank you.
May I say one more?
Yes, sir.
They're posting all those events. They're posting on like 18 different Facebook pages and all kinds of stuff. So if there's questions, either go to the Scottish Glenwood Current Events or the page is set up for the schools.
Individually, okay. All right, Rick. Pam, Rick, any Board of Education policy updates?
Well, we're working on the 5,000s. And my fault would be a little slow. I hope I'm getting done as much as I should be getting done. And Rick, can you just show them the book that we got from BOCES? That's the policy book we got from BOCES, their suggestion for our policy book.
Have you not through that yet?
Susan is going through to see what's given to us and what's required. And what she doesn't think we need. And we're going to go through and try, you know, basically stick as our starting point with what our policy manual is, and then see what we have to possibly add from what they said. Susan showed me the book. It was just, you've got to be kidding me. So.
As I understand it, Susan's also having staff going through cross-section, cross-referencing our current set of policies with their recommendations. The nice thing about this is everything here is what's called defendable. Is that the word? So it's already embedded, which, so it's a really nice resource for the work that we're doing. So we know that, you know, it's strong policy going forward. So I don't think we're going to, you know, not use all the work we've done already, but we're going to definitely incorporate or even follow the lead on some of the stuff that BOCES has done for us. So we have great momentum. This does kind of like, I wouldn't call it a cog in the wheel, but it is something to really add, you know, some time and effort to read through and then kind of mix it back into what we've already done. So to be honest, I don't know if within the next couple of months, this process will be done. This may last, you know, into the fall. So still, a lot of great effort has been happening. Like Pam said, we're looking to get together on the 5,000s.
Great. Thanks both for doing it. I appreciate that. Our Board of Education goals?
I should probably just, for a second, as an announcement, I am going to run for reelection one more time, because I don't want to walk out in the middle of what we're doing on policy. So I know, I hope there's some rumors going around that I'm not going to run. But I am going to run one more time to see if we can get the policies finished. I just can't stand walking out in the middle of, you know, doing something. So.
All right. Thank you, Pam. Our Board of Education goals, so one of them obviously is Susan's review that we will get cracking on, team, once we get over budget season. So once the budget is done, we've all approved that, we'll roll right into that in some of our executive session meetings. So that'll be done. And obviously, we don't have, we just talked about the budget.
Yes, we did.
And we will be for the next few weeks as well. All right. Moving on to item number six, we get a motion for the legal notice of the annual district election on May 16.
I'll make a motion that we approve the legal notice of the annual district election to be held on Tuesday, May 16, 2023, as submitted.
Thank you. Second.
Second.
Thank you, Dave. Anyone have any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed, or abstained, so moved. Motion for item number seven, to approve the shared services plus maintenance agreement.
I'll make a motion that we approve the shared services plus maintenance agreement as submitted.
Thank you, Rick. Second.
I'll second.
Pam, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Or abstain, so moved. I think a motion for item number eight, to approve the number N, which means question of the local central school district and the district aides and monitors unit.
I'll make a motion that we approve the MOA between the Scottish Glenwood Central School District and the Scottish Glenwood School District aides and monitors unit as submitted.
Thank you, Rick. Second.
Second.
Thank you, sir. Anyone have any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose, or abstain, so moved. Motion for item number nine, the MOA between Scottish Glenwood School Districts and the Secretarial Association.
I'll move we approve the MOA between the Scottish Glenwood Central School District and the Scottish Glenwood Secretarial Association.
Thank you, Dave.
I'll second.
Thank you, Rick. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose, or abstain, so moved. Motion for item number 10, the resolution to accept and establish the Acoustic Mega Jam and Brett Pauls' last 2006 scholarship.
I'll move we accept and establish the Acoustic Mega Jam scholarship and that we also approve the, accept and appropriate the various high school scholarships that we've received money for since the last.
Just hearing Pam say the word Mega Jam made my mind so. Second, please.
Second.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose, or abstain, so moved. Motion for resolution number 12, to accept and appropriate the donation from the Lincoln Elementary PTA.
I make a motion that we accept the resolution to accept and appropriate gifts for donation from Lincoln Elementary School PTA.
Thank you, Rick. Second.
I'll second.
Thank you. Questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose, abstain, so moved. In front of everybody is a revised school calendar. Bobby put it in front of all of us. So when you review it, I would just need a motion to review and adopt the 23-24 school calendar.
How do you know what revisions are?
Yes, just one revision there, Pam. It will be June 17. We had originally had everybody out of school. That's the first day of need, I believe. And the high school will take it as a reading day, but everyone else will be in session.
I'll move we adopt the 2023-2024 school calendar as submitted today.
Thank you. Second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Rick. Any further questions?
I have one question. It's from both my sons. Is there any way to extend the winter vacation farther into January from, instead of just January 1st? It's a joke. My boys were saying, can we extend the vacation?
It's all about the number of days.
Ms. Pam, I know that you've read through and have some highlights for me?
Yeah, I have ten or twelve. Nothing that affects the, do you want me to just pass?
That would be lovely. Thank you.
I would like that.
Yes, absolutely.
There are just things like periods are left out, or we decided a couple of weeks ago we're going to go with superintendent instead of superintendent of schools, so there's like four of those. And there's a couple of them where the bullets aren't lined up, just stuff, a couple of them where he or she did. So we're trying to go to the student instead of he or she, or the complaint instead of he or she, to get that language out of there. So it's like nothing that's affecting the meaning or the purpose or anything else of all of these, they're just little grammatical things that need to be changed.
Thank you. How can we make those changes?
Thank you.
So we will move the first read with the correct.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone oppose? Or abstain? So moved. Motion for item fifteen, again, the first reading of the new policy for Title One parent and family engagement.
I'll move that we approve for first reading the new policy on Title One parent and family engagement with changes of, of schools taken on. That's the only changes that happen.
Okay, thank you. And second.
I'll second.
Emily? All right, so we'll move that, as Pam just said, with the changes. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Or abstain? So moved. A motion for item sixteen, seventeen.
I'll move communications A and B, staffing one through eight, and replacement of students with disabilities as submitted.
Thank you. And second.
Second.
Thank you, Dave. Anyone have any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Or abstain?
I'm abstaining.
Thank you. All right, so moved. Now the treasurer's report, January twenty-three. Anyone have any questions on that? So moved. Our warrants, payroll, payroll warrant number forty-three, number forty-six, number forty-eight. Check warrants, eight forty-two, H twelve, eight forty-five. Beautiful. Other business? Anyone have any other business? All right, so at this time we will open up the second hearing and privilege of the floor. If anyone would like to address the floor, please just state your name and address and file a forms five in the policy. All right. In that place, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you, Pam. Second.
I'll second.
Dave, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All in favor? Thank you, everybody. Appreciate it. Thank you. All right, so moved. Now the treasurer's report, January twenty-three. Anyone have any questions on that? So moved. Our warrants, payroll, payroll warrant number forty-three, number forty-six, number forty-eight. Check warrants, eight forty-two, H twelve, eight forty-five. Beautiful. Other business? Anyone have any other business? All right, so at this time we will open up the second hearing and privilege of the floor. If anyone would like to address the floor, please just state your name and address and file a forms five in the policy. All right. In that place, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you, Pam. Second.
I'll second.
Dave, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All in favor? Thank you, everybody. Appreciate it.